Counsel, if you will please come to order. It is 7:00 PM by my watch, even though the clock at the back says it's one minute till. In just a minute, I'll ask everyone to stand. We'll be led in an opening prayer by Senior Minister Jeff Brooks with the Lake City's Church of Christ. Afterwards, please remain standing while we're led in the pledges to the American flag and the Texas flag. Let Councilmember Lamont please stand.
Let's bow together. Father God, we thank you for being a good God who knows how to give good gifts to his kids. Lord, we're thankful for the gift of this country, of a place where we're free to assemble, where we're free to worship you, where we're free to make of our communities better places. Lord, bless these men and women, whether they're elected, appointed, or just neighbors that are here, to build a safer community, a better community. Lord, give them wisdom and discernment. Help them to follow in the footsteps of your Son, who said that we should love our neighbors as ourselves. Lord, I just ask that you give them a greater portion of wisdom, eyes to see the path ahead of them, and, Father, that you would keep us free and you would always make us good. And so, Lord, would you bless them and keep them? Make your face to shine upon them. Lift your countenance upon them and give them peace. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. You may be seated. It is time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity to citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete a speaker's form that indicates the topic of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Holly, do we have anybody that signed up for this time?
Not for citizens' presentations, no.
All right. Anyone wanting to speak at citizens' presentations that did not spill out of form. Seeing no one wishing to do so, we will move on to our announcements and reports. Item number one, receive town manager classes update and provide input regarding the following: primary runoff early voting, July 4th celebration, Lean Six Sigma training, and staffing. Tom, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start by letting you all know that the early voting for the 2018 primary election begins May 14th, runs through May 18th. The times and the locations for the early voting are located on the town's website. The early voting for our Denton County residents will take place at the Savore Building. And for our Tarrant County residents, it'll be at the South Lake City Hall. With regard to the 4th of July celebration, preparation for the celebration is in full swing. Staff is coordinating very well with Stars and Stripes Committee on the 5K run in the parade. And I'm also very pleased to announce that we've redesigned our July 4th webpage. It's now fully up and running. The new webpage contains a great deal of information for our residents, and it also has a online registration feature this year to sign up for the run in the parade. Staff and department directors were involved in a three-day training session Lean Six Sigma Yellow Belt certification that was taught by Master Black Belt Chris White of Rockwell. The purpose of the training is to improve our administrative processes through the identification of inconsistencies and defects in some of our operating procedures. From that, we will then implement the change based upon an analysis and a systematic look at an approach and how we can move to improve those systems. As a result of the training, we're going to also take selected processes that are identified for improvement. We're going to rank them all by risk and then move through each in an evaluative process on an annual basis. And then additionally, we hope to send a select few of our staff members on to the next level of training, which is Green Belt training. If we can accomplish that, then we'll be able to do most of the future evaluations and process improvements in-house. And then lastly, with regard to staffing, the police department recently filled our remaining three patrol vacancies with the hiring of three new cadets. Our cadets will attend the central, I'm sorry, the North Central Texas Regional Police Academy beginning in June. And once they finish their five months of training, will come back, start the field training process, and we'll begin working for the town. I'm also pleased to announce the promotion of Officer Brian Gleck to the rank of Sergeant. Brian's a five-and-a-half-year veteran with the Trophy Club Police Department, and he will start his new duties effective May 27th. I'm also very pleased to announce the hiring of Jeff Mitchell to fill another sergeant vacancy that we have. Jeff is a 27-year veteran of the Irving Police Department, where he serves currently as a sergeant in their SRO division. Sergeant Mitchell will assume duties here at Trophy Club on July 2nd. And then additionally, the Parks and Rec Department is conducting interviews this week for our parks superintendent position, and our recreation staff remains very busy with the onboarding of 30-plus seasonal employees that will be working out at the pool in our day camp over the summer. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions for the town manager? Seeing no one wish to, thank you, Tom, for your report. Counsel, we're moving on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have items two through six, and at this time, the chair would recognize Philip Schoffner.
Yes, I want to move three through six, but I want to pull item two, so I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda three through six.
Second.
You threw me off there, Nick.
All right.
Easily you ask.
I know. But you told me in advance you were going to do something, so.
Saying that.
Yeah. Okay. So we have a motion by Schoffner, a second by Jensen, to approve items three through six, right?
Correct.
All right. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Three through six are approved unanimously. We'll go back to item number two. Consider to take appropriate action regarding the town council regular session minutes dated April 24th. Recognize Schoffner.
Yes, if you look at page 12, the reason I pulled this is, at the very bottom of the page, we made a motion after quite a few amendments to, basically, if you remember, we were going to do the landscaping, if all the property owners agreed, from two, Lake Forest Drive to Hogan's Glen. We inadvertently made a mistake because that, the property that we maintain, I think, actually starts after Troone. And I guess Tony, if he can confirm that.
Tony?
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. That's correct. It starts over at Troone. It starts at Troone, and the property, the streets that are covered are Merrifield Court and Cypress Court, all the way over towards Lake Forest.
Okay. So the reason I pulled this is just to get that confirmation, and then when we get to future agenda, I guess we can put that on future agenda and then deal with it later. So I just wanted to point that out. No problems with the minutes, Holly. They're flawless as usual, but I will make a motion to approve consent agenda item two.
Second. So you're approving the minutes without them being corrected?
Yeah, because they're correct. It's what we, the motion we made, so we'll have to put this on future agenda to deal with it.
Yeah, the motion didn't capture our intent, is what I'm saying.
Right, correct. Okay. You know, it captured our intent, but we were very specific.
Too specific.
Yeah, too specific.
We'd get burned both ways.
Yeah, exactly.
So I think I heard a second, but I don't know who was it.
That was Lamont.
It was Lamont, okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve item number two. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It does pass unanimously.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you, Philip. We will move on to item number seven in the regular session. Consider to take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the town council recognizing May 2018 as Children's Mental Health Awareness Month in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. This time, I'd recognize the Mayor Pro Tem to read the proclamation.
Thank you, sir. Proclamation of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, recognizing May 2018 as Children's Mental Health Awareness Month in Trophy Club. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of the Town of Trophy Club, and whereas the need for comprehensive, coordinated mental health services for children, youth, and families places upon our community a critical responsibility, and whereas only 50% of Denton County children and adolescents receive needed mental health treatment, and whereas it is appropriate that a month should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts towards children's mental health and well-being, and whereas there's a strong research that diet, exercise, sleep, and stress management can help all Americans protect their health and well-being, and whereas with effective treatment, children, adults, and families with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts, and whereas the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team in partnership with the United Way of Denton County, Denton County MHMR Center, and the Wellness Alliance for Total Children's Health of Denton County, led by Cook Children's, through their prevention-based approaches to serving children and adolescents, are effectively addressing the mental health needs of children, youth, and families in our community, now therefore Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Town Council of Trophy Club, Texas, does hereby proclaim May 2018 to be Children's Mental Health Awareness Month in the Town of Trophy Club. And I will make a motion that we approve proclamation number 2018-07 with an effective date of May 8th, 2018.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Flurry. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. No opposed, it does pass. At this time, I'd recognize Sonya Redwine, who is the Director of Health and Mental Health Initiatives of United Way of Denton County. If you would like to say a few words, and while you're speaking, I'm going to come down and then we'll present you with the proclamation.
Sure, thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to come, and we are very appreciative of the city council to make mental health awareness a month here in Trophy Club. We recognize that one in every five persons experiences a mental health condition, and that equates to over 167,000 residents in Denton County. We also know that many of those individuals will experience their first mental health condition as adolescents, and so that is why it is critical that we are addressing mental health at all ages. So I appreciate your commitment to that and hope that, in addition to this month, you'll be involved with our behavioral health leadership team in creating change and raising awareness throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back here, we'll take a picture and present the proclamation. Consider to take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the town council recognizing May 13 through 19, 2018 as Police Week and May 15, 2018 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Trophy Club, amplified in an effective date. At this time, I'd recognize the Mayor Pro Tem to read the proclamation.
A proclamation of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, recognizing the week of May 13 through 19, 2018 as Police Week in Trophy Club in conjunction with National Police Week, and recognizing May 15, 2018 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Trophy Club. Whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Law Enforcement Agency of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, and whereas there have been 58,627 assaults against law enforcement officers in 2016, resulting in approximately 16,677 injuries, and whereas the, since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, and whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, and whereas 360 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 129 officers killed in 2017 and 231 officers killed in previous years, and whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 30th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2018, and whereas the Candlelight Vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year, May 13 through 19, 2018, and whereas May 15, 2018 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff, now therefore Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, does hereby proclaim to observe the week of May 13 through 19, 2018 as Police Week and May 15, 2018 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the Town of Trophy Club, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. I'll make a motion, we approve proclamation 2018-08 with an effective date of May 8, 2018.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Flurry. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Chief, were you going to say a few words, please?
Mayor and Counsel, I want to thank you for taking a moment to recognize law enforcement and your Trophy Club police officers this year, and thank the citizens of Trophy Club for supporting us as they do continuously. So thank you very much.
All right, we're going to take a picture back here, Chief. So those of you who did get a tour of the town hall, who created this photo place back here. And if you wondered why we made that place the other way from where we sent the place, just because of the flags back here. That actually may have been created by the council so that it gave me exercise. Thank you. Appreciate that you're looking out for it. All right, item nine, receive an annual report from the Northwest Metropore Chamber of Commerce and discussion of same. This time, I'd recognize Sally Aldridge, who is a Trophy Club citizen and is the president or is it chairman?
President.
President of the Chamber of Commerce, Sally. And do we have a presentation?
We do.
Okay.
I think I have to do. There we go. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to come and give you an update on the Chamber of Commerce. We've had an amazing year for 2017, and we're already kicking off heavily in 2018. And just to give you a little bit of update on our chamber, as you know, we are a regional chamber representing seven communities and what I feel is the fastest-growing area, not only in this region, but also in this nation of ours, when you see all the dirt that's moving and the roads that are being built. We are currently at 440 members. We ended the year at 418, so as you can see, our numbers are growing extensively, and actually, I think I can announce that we're pretty much at 450 at this point. So we had a tremendous growth rate in 2017 of 17%. We had 132 new members and 80% retention, which in the chamber industry, this is very high. We had a 10% increase in our event attendance, and as you can see by the spread, and you also have information in your packets that gives you a breakdown of all the communities and the percentages of where the members are coming from. We still are pulling heavily from the Alliance corridor, and 50% of our membership still is coming from outside of our seven communities, so it just shows you how many businesses really want to be a part of what's going on in this region. And then I'm pleased to say we won a few awards or definitely were recognized on a national basis. We won National Communications Excellent Award for our chamber website, and that was given by the American Chamber of Commerce executives. And then on, for the Texas Chamber of Commerce executives, we won both second place in newsletter, which is our Chamber Latte, which you all receive on a Monday morning and lets you know all the things that are going on with the chamber, as well as our economic development brochure, which is in your packet. And then we are very strong with our mission, vision, and value statements. They have not changed. And then, of course, we're kicking off our 30th anniversary this year, which we did with our awards gala, which I'll tell you briefly in a minute. Our 2018 Board of Directors is very strong in both small and large business so that we have a good voice at the table for what's happening on the business growth. And as I said, we kicked up our 30th anniversary at our annual awards gala, and our communities, as always, is recognized for your tremendous support. And as you can see, we did the champagne toast this year. The three main areas that we focus on for our membership is networking, promoting, and advocacy, and this is just a few of the items that we cover throughout the year for our business members. And then with our communities, as you know, we work heavily in the economic development side, but promoting on a regional basis. This year, we held our, the Alliance Development Forum, which we partner with all of our communities. We had the highest attendance ever, which was over 400, and the reports that I received back from the Economic Development Committee was that there was a tremendous traffic at each one of the community tables from those that were attending the event. And then our State of the Communities address, which we host following month, the ADF was in March, the luncheon was in April, again, a high attendance, and all of our mayors did a phenomenal report on what's happening in each one of our communities. Our membership luncheons continue to average a high number. Last year, we changed our format by hosting our luncheons every other month, so on the even months instead of every month, and we found that that really helped attendance with all of our events. So our major events were in the uneven months, and our luncheons were in our even months. On the economic development side, we continue a strategic plan. We are in our third year of it, and I think we'll be reviewing to see what changes we need to happen for the future years. We still contract with the Economic Development Specialist that keeps us on target with all of the things that are changing in this region. We continue to play the economic development video that we created last year, and I think we'll be reviewing whether changes need to happen for the future year. We have a separate website that's designed for economic development called Metropore Chamber, and we keep that up to date on a continuous basis, which is there for our communities to use when you're looking for businesses to come to your community. And then also in your packet is the Economic Development brochure, which I mentioned earlier that was, that we won an award for. And then quarterly, we meet with our mayors and our community managers at the chamber office and discuss challenges, issues, and different things that are happening in each one of our communities, and it's a great opportunity to update each other. And then monthly, we host an economic development meeting at the office where the economic development staff and town managers meet with me to discuss what we're working on on a regional basis. And then we participate in the net car booth in the fall with each one of the communities. Our Regional Advantage Leadership Program, I'm happy to say that our class that will be graduating in June, their last session is this Friday, and I believe all 26 participants will be graduating this year. And it's been another great year, so it's been our second year, and we did our tour of each one of the communities again, which I believe is on this slide. And I wasn't here for this one, but I understand it did really well. So thank you for hosting the leadership class. And then our Business Builder Networking continues to grow. We average about 65. This is our way of bringing our membership and the businesses to each one of our communities. We host it, and we move around. This month, it will be at, in Justin, and I think next month, we're actually coming to Trophy Club, and I think actually the town hall will be hosting this year. And then ribbon cuttings, we did 37 ribbon cuttings and ground breakings in 2017. I think that also set another record. And we, with the ribbon cuttings and groundbreaking, we make sure that we promote all the new members in all of our social media, as well as our ambassador team participates. Our Business Referral and Community Guide, you have one of those in your packet as well. This is what we use to cover not only what's happening in our communities, it's our guide to list all of our businesses. So we use this for economic development, as well as for anyone coming to the area. It is posted on our website, so people have access to that if they're looking to move to this area or start a business. And that's, this, oh, we also did, since it was our 30th anniversary, there's some really interesting pictures in the book on then and now, which, if you've been here a long time, you, those pictures are, or whether you haven't been here, it's phenomenal to see how this area has grown tremendously. And that is my presentation. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Sally?
Thank you. Thank you for your partnership. I appreciate it.
Sally, thank you. You do a great job leading the chamber, and we've had great support from you and your organizations for Trophy Club, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item 10, I think is where I'm moving to. Item 10, receive a presentation from the Trophy Club Women's Club regarding a proposal for a statue at the Veterans Memorial, along with discussion of and take appropriate action regarding the presentation. At this time, I have Alice Murphy, who is president of their board, and Carol Jansen, who is vice president, I believe, who are going to say a few words. So I'll introduce you, and you come to the speaker, please.
I am the sister of a Vietnam veteran. I'm the daughter and daughter-in-law of a World War II veteran, one who was injured off of Iwo Jima. I'm the wife of a veteran who was in when they really didn't have a purpose for the Army, and I'm a mother of a current soldier who, I don't know what you call what we're going through right now, but he's been in for 16 years, so he's seen a little bit of everything. Like Nick said, I'm the president of Trophy Club Women's Club. Last summer, I came before the council to give you an update on the development with the memorial, as well as updates for the upcoming garage sale and home tour. I mentioned my personal disappointment that the military dog would not be a Basset Hound. However, Greg was pleased that it might be a German Shepherd. This is my third year to be the president of Trophy Club Women's Club, and my last year. We have turnover approximately every one to three years. With that turnover, we have changed with the leadership of specific committees, such as the Veterans Memorial Committee. Because of the ever-changing leadership, our goals and plans can often change, just like with the town council. We are often hamstrung by what a previous board or council voted for, such as PD 30. Two veterans from Trophy Club Women's Club were originally the chairs of the Veterans Memorial Committee. One of the leaders was Carol Jansen, who was unfortunately injured in a serious car accident, and a new leader was appointed. When that leader moved out of town, we tried to pick up the pieces of what she had left incomplete. The next chair presented a larger memorial that was voted down by the council. When I became president, I appointed a new chair to lead the veterans group to closure with the remaining funds we had in our account that were designed and donated for the Veterans Memorial. Because of the amount of funds, we were limited in what we could provide. Then a donor came forward unsolicited and offered us money to complete our project. With his donation, we were able to develop something Trophy Club Women's Club veterans, and hopefully the town could be proud of. As the president of Trophy Club Women's Club, I represent the membership and what they support and desire. Just as you do, as a member of the council, you represent and support what the citizens want. The outcome may not always be what you or I personally desire, but I look for the greater good in the club, just like you would for the town and citizens. Thank you.
Carol?
Hi, I'm Carol Jansen, and we have quite a bit of supporters here, and I'd like to ask them if they would stand and be recognized for us right now. As Alice pointed out, thank you all very much, that we stand united in this. We started this memorial to honor veterans, all veterans, and we had hoped to finish it and... And we had hoped to finish it, and as Alice said, things changed. My accident, I'm still going through things for that, but that is beside the point. All we're trying to do at this point is to use up our remainder donor-intent funds to create a memorial to go in that. That would be, allow us to close the account, satisfy the donors' wishes, and move on. When we first started doing this research, we had no idea how expensive and how hard it was to find a reputable sculptor or artist that would be willing to work with us in our constraints and our budget. We originally would have loved to have had a life-size soldier as the memorial, a female, may I say. But since that is close to $100,000, that was beyond our scope. So right now, we have a little over $30,000. We have found a reputable artist and sculptor who is willing to work with us in our budget, is willing to personally drive the sculpture when it's done from New Mexico here, and work with James at the Fort Worth Monument Stone, who installed all the stone in our memorial currently to have it on a base. The fact is that this money was donated for the Veterans Memorial, and any donor-intent funds have to be used for what they're intended for. One of our larger donors that came forward, as Alice had said, with the $10,000, enabled us to be able to get at least a life-size military working dog on a base. The military working dog, as you can see up there, this is a basic sketch, preliminary sketch. It will not be exactly like this, but it's to honor and show the emotion that we all have suffered a loss through a military person. Not only am I a veteran, my dad is, was retired military veteran, served in World War II. My husband's father was also, he was actually born at West Point. My husband, his father was an instructor there. And our son is currently active duty, has served both in Guantanamo Bay and in Afghanistan. And he's currently on active duty right now as we speak. This memorial, we just would like to see this money used as donor-intended. We, I've heard the comment before about, didn't know, thought it was done. I don't know of anything, I guess, that is ever complete. We kept in contact. We did everything we were told to do by the town, by the council, whether that was you or your predecessors. But I have dates. April 2, 2014, we met, talked about the donor-intent money, what we were going to do. May 15, 2015, 9:00 AM, we met again. July 2015, we met. February 8, 2016, when it was decided to take over by the town. We also mentioned at that time, we have these designated funds, we need to find a source to use them. So all along, we, at the time, we're working with Adam Adams, being the Parks and Rec Director. And I have a whole list of dates when we have met. We've met with Stephen Glickman and Adam on several occasions. Our new chair, Rhonda Labor, has actually had correspondence with Mr. Rowe in February of 2017 to ask what our status was. So this is no secret that we had this money. We were just trying to find an artist who would work with us so we could spend it the way the donors intended. We are also proud to say that we are working together with the Military Veterans Association, and we are going to be able to work and tweak the design and get everybody's voices heard.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
All right. So at this time, I have three council people who have indicated they want to speak. I'll begin and recognize Eric Jensen.
Is there no further citizens to speak on?
There are, but I wasn't sure what you were going to do.
I'd rather, I'd rather hear all of them speak before.
All right. So Alicia, are you okay with that, too?
Sure.
And Greg, are you okay with that, too?
Actually, I'd like to make a motion.
Then I, then I take back my floor.
All right. So.
Remember who wanted to hear you.
So, so what I'm going to do is make the decision that we're going to deal with some of the citizen comments first, Greg. I appreciate what you're trying to do, but we do have a number of people. There are, for council's purpose, there are 10 people who filled out a speaker's form. Whether they are going to say one word or say, "I don't want to speak," I'm not quite sure. And we would recognize those in order that they were turned in. And then I have five people who said they wanted to fill out the form, so they would be listed as supporting, placing the, the item in the memorial, but did not want to speak. And then for the purpose to follow our rules of procedure, anyone who sends a letter to the town in reference to a council agenda item that it goes, is addressed to the town secretary, is then printed for our meeting and is available in the back of the room if you want to review those. And there are four email letters that came in that way. There were a number of you that sent emails directly to mayor and council that are also part of our information that we received prior to the meeting. So those are the people. And so I'm going to go down this list, and I'll call your name.
Hey, real quick, before we get into them, sorry to interrupt, but Ms. Jansen mentioned that Ms. Labor had had an exchange and email with me. I just wanted to make it clear, her email, you meant Mr. Perro, right?
No, actually, I meant, I thought, I'm sorry. She just said it was Mr. Schaffner.
Oh, okay. I was going around going, I want to make sure I remember the conversation. Okay, good. Neither one of us is losing our mind yet. That's good. Okay.
Okay, good. All right. Okay. So the first person who signed up was Sally Freeman. Sally, do you wish to come speak, come to the podium? Please state your name and address for us for the record, and then you may speak up to four minutes.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Sally Freeman, and I live at 2 Cady Lane in Trophy Club. I am here in support of Trophy Club Women's Club utilizing the remaining designated funds for a monument to be placed in the Military Veteran Memorial to honor our veterans. And I ask you to vote in favor of it, just because you have no idea the hours and dedication that these three women over here have put in. You just have no idea what they've gone through finding an artist that could do this for us. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. The next person is Terrell Flynn. Ms. Flynn, would you like to address the council? Again, state your name and address for the record.
Mayor and Town Council, thank you. My name is Terrell Flynn. I live at 417 Ramsey Trailway and Trophy Club. I'm in support of the Trophy Club Women's Club utilizing the remaining designated funds for a monument to be placed in Military Veterans Memorial to honor all of our veterans.
Thank you. The next person is Jim Perro. Mr. Perro?
You better put the watch on him.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Jim Perro. I live at 8 Brookfield Court here at Trophy Club. Since the proposed monument, design, manufacture, and installation will cost the town absolutely nothing, and will be paid for and overseen by the Trophy Club Women's Club, the donor, and a team of volunteers, including veterans and residents, with the support and assistance of the Metropore Veterans Association, there is truly no reason that I can see to cause the council to vote against the agenda item and placing the monument in the existing Veterans Memorial. The Town Council of Trophy Club, as the town has grown, has consistently made changes and updates to the town parks and other facilities and signage used by the, the town. And so the fact we've done the memorial to this point should not necessarily close the door on adding one more item to honor a very important member of the military team. Nothing we can ever do can repay our veterans for the tremendous sacrifice they have made for our land and our people throughout our history. Were it not for the veterans whose names, who made the ultimate sacrifice, we'd not even be here tonight, celebrating the right to meet and exercise this freedom. I hope this council will express their appreciation for our veterans and their service dogs. And if you've been in the military, you know that service dog and its handler are a living, breathing team. They function as one, and these animals will die to save their handler and the team that they're assigned to without hesitation. There is part, as big a part of the military as their handlers. And so if we were to grant this, would give these two-legged heroes and four-legged heroes a union together in that memorial, recognizing both for the sacrifices they have made. Remember, freedom is not free. Tonight, you have an opportunity to say thank you to all the veterans, four-legged ones included. As a veteran from Vietnam, I ask that the council grant us the right to move forward and enhance the veteran memorial in a respectful and moving manner that honors the service of all our veterans. And I would just point out that today, coincidentally, is the 73rd anniversary of VE Day. And on that day, the world came together to express their thanksgiving and appreciation for the brave men and women and service dogs who also fought alongside them in World War II, to free us from the tyranny that was trying to take over the world. So council, I implore you to consider what this addition will do and the great service it will bring to the veterans and their animals.
Thank you, Mr. Perro. Next is Carl Monger. Name and address.
Mayor, Council, my name is Carl Monger. I live at 192 Durango Drive here in Trophy Club. It's an honor to be here with the Trophy Club Women's Club. I want to say first off, thank you for the town for approving the monument or the memorial in the first place. I want to say thank you to the Trophy Club Women's Club for coming up with the initial impetus to do it. And I'll tell you a quick story here in just a moment. I'd also like to thank Jim Perro for his work in helping ensure that the monument continued to grow. I want to say, real quick, as nobody's recognized them yet, the parents of Staff Sergeant Brian Burgess are Gold Star family member. Their son was killed in Afghanistan seven years ago, and I'm very proud to kind of point them out. If you would just stand real quick. I'm pleased that they're here, and they're representative of what our community has done to acknowledge and honor veterans and their families. So thank you for being here. Jim talked about it being the VE Day, 73rd anniversary today. We have a World War II veteran that survived the Battle of the Bulge that's here as well. So Bill, if you would, just stand real quick. Memorial Day last year, after the service at the cemetery, I went over to the Veteran Memorial. And there was a young family there, and their kids were putting flowers in between the bricks at the memorial. And as I walked up, the mom says to her daughter, "These men died for our freedoms." And I said, "Well, excuse me, we're not all dead yet." And, and then it was an opportunity to talk to her about why the memorial was there. And she wanted to know, what's the difference between Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Veterans Day, because it all kind of runs together, and we don't really understand. So, and they are residents of Trophy Club. It was an opportunity for me to educate a young family on the value of military service. It was a focal point for our community that drew people to the memorial. The memorial is an absolutely wonderful place. I ride by it four or five times on my bike every week, and if the sun's just right, I want to stop, pull over, and look at it because it's beautiful. I think the addition of, of this, or an adjusted statue that goes into the memorial is going to enhance it. It's going to make it better. It's going to bring more people that come into our town, that see it, that recognize and honor veterans, and then hopefully will stick around and participate and go swim at the pool and do other things like that. So I appreciate the opportunity again to speak. I'm 100% in support of what they're doing. I trust their judgment, and we're going to work with them to make sure that it looks awesome and stays in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Good evening, mayor, council. Bert Miller, 6 Cypress Court here in Trophy Club. I'm speaking in favor of this memorial that has been proposed by the Women's Club for that facility. These, the rendering that's up there of what is known the military as a war dog, I think is appropriate. I know that a lot of service members would also feel that way, whether Coast Guard, Army, Navy, Marine, Air Force. There's a lot of folks that, not necessarily live in Trophy Club, but other places, that there were 18, 19, 20-year-old soldiers in the theater of operation whose lives were possibly saved by the work of a service dog, finding an IED, or doing other valuable work for them. And because of the work that those animals did, they can enjoy 5K runs with their families. They're here. They can go to the pool with their children. They can enjoy school activities and still be a part of society. So I encourage you to support this effort by the Women's Club. I think it's very worthwhile and very fitting.
Thank you, sir. Rhonda Labor?
Council, mayor, my name is Rhonda Labor, and as you know, I'm the current.
State your dress, please.
Oh, 202533 Roseville Drive. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. Okay, I'm the current chairman of the Veterans Memorial Committee. I would ask you to please, please let us add, the Trophy Club Women's Club add this monument to our memorial. This monument is multi-layered in its symbolism. We didn't just choose it randomly. First, it does honor the military dog. I mean, the military dog has saved countless lives as it's sniffed out explosives and other dangers. Also, it honors every wounded veteran and every wounded and fallen soldier, if you think about it up there. And we also, lastly, but certainly not, something we really need to remember, is a reminder of how precious our freedom is and the high cost of that freedom. So I implore you, please, please let us put this, let us honor our veterans, and more importantly, let us honor our commitment to our donors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Labor. Worth, as you're coming forward, would you remind me how many years or what year you moved to Trophy Club?
Yes, sir, certainly will. My name is Worth Blake. I live at 244 Oak Hill Drive in Trophy Club. Very proud and happy citizen of Trophy Club. The mayor visited our house recently as a member of the Metropore Meals on Wheels because I had been ill, my wife is still ill, and couldn't come tonight, but I appreciated the mayor to be there. We moved here in 1989, so we've had a long and wonderful journey as a member of this wonderful community.
Thank you.
I would just like to endorse wholeheartedly and with a feeling of great interest the work these young, these ladies have done for us. It has been so great to hear them express their story about their support of the Metropore, Metropore Veterans Association, of which I join Carl and Jim and my good fellow from the World War II, support the Metropore Veterans Association. And I urge you to consider very positively this offer that's being made. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blake.
Terry Burgess, 2620 Tar Hill Drive, Fort Worth, Texas, and mayor, mayor pro temp, council members. I thought I had a speech ready for you. I had not seen the drawing. My wife and I, there's about 6,700 Gold Star families just from Iraq and Afghanistan. We're just one of them. And seeing the dog with this paw in the helmet, when I reached out my son's casket and I, I touched his hand, that's what it made me think of. You've got Gold Star parents in your community. You've got them as neighbors, you're in line with them at the grocery store. We consider Trophy Club our second home. We've had the opportunity to speak at the memorial, at the dedication. We've had our vehicle in the parade. We're coming back Memorial Day to speak again. We love Trophy Club. And we love the memorial. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I hope you're coming back before the July.
Yes, sir.
All right. Shirley Forgan?
Hi, first of all, Mayor, your new building is beautiful. It's the first time I've seen it. Congratulations.
It's your building?
No, I don't live here anymore.
Oh, okay.
So, it's not my building.
Oh, okay. And we miss you.
I wanted to come here this evening to lend my support to the Trophy Club Veterans Memorial. I lived in Trophy Club for 10 years before moving to Southlake in 2003. I was on the first committee for planning and designing this beautiful memorial honoring all our veterans. My husband has a brick laid here in his memory. Since the heated discussion that had come to my attention, it made me sad to think that this memorial is being used as an instrument of dispute. And now I hear that things have been resolved, and I'm very happy to hear that. It was degrading its purpose, which is to honor and remember all those who have served. Surely, you know, whether you spent one day in the military, one month, or 40 years, you are a veteran. Heroics or bravery have nothing to do with it, and you don't have to die to become a veteran. I must admit that when I first saw the design depicting the service dog and the soldier's helmet and combat boots, touching as it was, I thought, "No, no, that's an Army tradition, and we've been stationed with the Army before." So, I did some research. I think most of us are aware what important roles the service dog plays in the Army because we see publicity regarding it all the time. Service dogs have been in use since World War II. For example, all the dogs are trained at Lackland Air Force Base in San Antonio. The dogs and their handlers learn the basic obedience techniques, search and rescue, and bomb detection. Among other things, the Air Force uses them for security and drug sniffing. The Navy SEALs and Marines take them ashore, as does the Coast Guard. So, I learned that all the five services utilize the awesome four-legged animals, the dogs, who become heroes doing their duty and demonstrating their devotion. They can definitely be referred to as veterans. Therefore, my support shifted to the suggested design of the working service guard dog with a small change. My husband always taught me, never criticize anything unless you come up with a solution or a suggestion. I would like a small change since it represents all five services, and this is an Army tradition, the combat boots and the helmet and their rifle sticking up. What if instead of the helmet and combat boots, which is an Army tradition, we add a simple headstone or change it to a simple headstone like it is in all military national cemeteries, with the dog's paw resting on top of the headstone? We could add small emblems of each service on the headstone or just an American flag, and that is my suggestion for a change. I also vote any special veto, any special recognition for sponsors or special requests from individuals. This could get out of hand. You know, I did this, I did that, I want my name on it. I don't think any specific person should be recognized. We cannot divide our honors. The memorial is for one purpose only, to honor all vets, and that's the bottom line. No one person or organization should be recognized. My husband was a two-star general and served in the Air Force for 34 years. Maybe another was the recipient of the Purple Heart or even killed, sad to say, but we're not honoring success, heroics, or deaths. We're honoring one group, veterans. Young, old, healthy, sick, alive, dead, active-duty, local, retired, living in a distant place. A quote from a local veteran's email to the Women's Club said, "This statue does not reflect our town's veteran," and I didn't understand that. Singular, one town, one veteran? This statue reflects on all towns and all veterans, not just Trophy Club. I wanted to add something here. I wanted to add my support to Trophy Club Women's Club. We planned the memorial. We helped design it. I was on the first committee. We spent hours working on the project, and to what here that they've done since then is absolutely amazing. They paid for it through generous donations. Yes, we got advice, but the final decision should be theirs. One of the, I said add my support, and one of the definitions of the word "add" is hang together, be understandable, and I looked that up in my Funkenwaggon. Not anybody knows, that's a dictionary.
Dictionary, yeah.
Okay. As a veteran spouse and former member of the Trophy Club Women's Club, may I suggest that we dispose of current dividing issues among us and regroup with our devotion to those who served so honorably, be it two-legged, four-legged, male or female. Let's plow proudly return to the reason we honor them, they served. And I forgot to say that I'm Shirley Forgan, and I'm from Southlake. I miss Trophy Club and see you tonight, many friends. Thank you.
What is your address in Southlake, please, for the record? What is your address for Southlake?
301 Watermere Drive, Apartment 103.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Then I'll recognize Bill Rose.
We're good, thank you. It's not always easy to follow the general's wife. Okay, Bill Rose, 219 Inverness. For purposes of further identification, retired Air Force Lieutenant Colonel. A Vietnam veteran, a Desert Storm veteran, a Desert Shield veteran, a Cold War veteran. Highest award was a distinguished flying cross for aerial activities over North Vietnam. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies. I, first of all, want to state that I support the concept illustrated by this sketch, and as previously stated, perhaps a few tweaks along the line. I looked at this and thought, you know, there's something really good there, but I think something's missing. I would like to make some suggestions that I believe would make a more poignant memorial. I believe that the helmet, boots, and dog tags in this sketch should be upgraded to the Battlefield Cross. Let's go forward. No?
You're not in your presentation. I think you're in the text.
Okay. You want to take over, Mike? Here we go. We'll do it again. The Battlefield Cross. The Battlefield Cross is a sacred tradition of American service members. For over a century, the Battlefield Cross has been memorialized thousands of fallen American heroes, both in combat zones and here at home. The Battlefield Cross consists of an inverted rifle topped by a helmet and identification tags and a pair of boots. According to the Smithsonian's National Museum of American History, the origin of the cross may have started in the Civil War. The Battlefield Cross has appeared in subsequent wars, including the most recent conflicts in Iraq and Afghanistan, where it has become part of memorial services or ceremonies. A U.S. Army Field Manual notes that the helmet and identification tags signify the dead soldier. The inverted rifle with bayonet signals a time for prayer of breaking the action to pay tribute to our comrade. The combat boots represent the final march of the last battle. There's a question on whether the military dog should have only collar or equipment as it surrounds the sketch. I believe the military dog should be shown with his full equipment or her full equipment. Also, rather than sitting, I think the dog makes a more powerful statement if it is laying down with either its head or its paws on the boots. This one would be laying down before a marker, but his head would be on the boots, as I suggest. This one is also, even though he's not a German Shepherd, I've seen this dog with the veteran. So, in this case, with the paws on the boot. To me, this shows enduring respect, dedication, and a firm resolution to remain strong. I think that's important in our memorial. With regard to the inclusion of the Purple Heart, which is shown on the sketch, I personally don't think that the general population has any concept what a Purple Heart denotes. If the thought is there's a need for some indication of paying a price, then you might look at this veteran and use him in your memorial. That, to me, is a very powerful message. In summary, I believe a strong memorial will combine these three images. And as I look at those three images, the more I study them, I think that the Battlefield Cross with the dog laying as he is across the boots, only a German Shepherd instead, would make an extremely poignant and powerful memorial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
You can take it down if you would, please, Mike.
All right, so we had five people who did fill out a speaker's form but did not want to speak. Edwina, Miles, Susan, Edens, Brian, and Lori, Katton, Rose Kirk, and Regina Artursa. I probably mispronounced that. Do any of you wish to speak at this time? All right, hearing none, we will move on. Those are all the speakers that we had, and I'll go back and recognize Councilmember Jensen who wanted the floor. Councilmember Jensen?
Make a motion to direct town staff to get with Trophy Club Women's Club in placing a monument to honor the veterans for it to be placed at Town Hall.
Okay, so, staff to get with the Women's Club? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
And, say that again, if you remember what you said.
I do remember what I said. For the monument honoring veterans to be placed at Town Hall.
All right. All right, please, please stay in order, please. Okay, did I get a second?
Yeah, Tim had a second.
Tim, all right. So, Kurt seconded, and we have a motion for floors from Jensen. All right, Eric, do you want to speak to it?
No, sir.
All right. At this time, we'll open the floor for Council to speak to it. After Council speaks or asks questions, then I'll ask if anyone wishes to speak for the item, for or against the item. All right, so, Council, anybody wish to speak? The two items that I have here for wishing to speak, I think, are on the previous item. Is that right, or do you want to speak now?
I wish to speak on this as well.
You'll speak on this one? Okay. Alicia?
Can you state that motion again, direct town staff?
To work with the Women's Club to place the proposed statue at the Town Hall. Is that right, Eric?
Yes, sir. It could be inside, outside, wherever staff and Women's Club feels is appropriate.
All right, Alicia?
Forgive me with the rules. When are we allowed to amend a motion?
Right now, you have the floor.
Okay, I would like to amend the motion to direct town staff to work with Trophy Club Women's Club for the monument to be placed in the Military Veterans Memorial.
I'll second that. So, I have a motion by Fleury, a seconded by Lamont, a motion to amend. So, we're on the discussion of the motion to amend at this time. Any discussion? So, I have, Greg, did you want to speak on this item?
It, the term is Trophy Club Veterans Memorial Park. That's where it belongs. We spent $520,000 to build the park in the parking lot with hotel tax, which encourages people who come here to visit the park. It doesn't encourage people to go to the Town Hall and see a separate statue.
All right, Councilmember Schaffner?
Yeah, originally, I wasn't going to speak, but I want everybody to know my position and the reason that I'm going to vote the way I vote tonight. And I sent out a letter, an email earlier, to everybody that had written, Council, or at least everybody that I could find had written us. And we got quite a few emails, I think maybe 20, 25 emails. And what I said in that letter is that this has been one of the most frustrating, yet ironically, at the same time, most rewarding projects that I've ever done in the six years that I've been on Council. We inherited this project. It wasn't our project. It came before a previous Council, and I actually watched the video, Carol, of the meeting in 2012 today at work. I've got one of those standing desks. Tom, my doctor, said, "You better start standing," and Tom has one, so I got this standing desk. I put the video on, and it was amazing when you saw the, it was almost like it was designed on a napkin. You hear about Southwest Airlines, and they just developed it on a napkin. That was sort of what, if you go back and watch that video, it was just a hand drawing like this of what they envisioned the memorial to be. It wasn't elaborate. It was a very simple, yet elegant memorial. And so, that came before Council. Connie was mayor, and Jeanette, and Bill, and Glenn, and Clint, and Danny were on Council. It came before them in 2012, and they approved the concept. And so, fast forward four years later, the Women's Club came before us, and at that time, the memorial really only had a flagpole and a flag, and I think some benches around it. And it was mulch, you know, it was just like black mulch that staff, I think, brought in 20 yards every year. It had weeds growing. It was a disaster. I mean, just a literal disaster. It was not something that this town would be proud of, and we certainly, as a council, were not proud of it. And so, if you fast forward to 2016, and I'm just sort of giving you the history so that then I can sort of let you know how I'm going to vote tonight. You fast forward to 2016, and the Women's Club came before us, and I understand what Alice is saying about changeover in groups, changeover in committees. And we were presented with a four-phase, huge project that they estimated would cost They had raised $18,000. And so, we, you know, as a council, it was a staggering number to begin with. They wanted to do it in phases. And so, we made the decision that night that we would take over the project because, like I said, it was a disaster, it was an embarrassment, and so, we wanted to give the veterans of the community something that they could be proud of. And so, what we did is kind of a combination. We decided to, that original approval that had been approved in 2012, we decided to go with that, add a little sidewalk over to the existing trail, and replace all of that mulch with the weeds growing out of it with turf. And so, what you see out there today was a result of that night when we took over and decided to use hotel occupancy funds for that project. Fast forward now to today. About a week ago, I asked town staff finance to give me the numbers. What did that memorial actually cost us? You know, I knew what we had approved as far as contractors, but I didn't know the total cost. And so... And so, they sent back that just the memorial cost the town $222,125.78. They got it to the penny to build. If you add the parking lot into that total, which, you know, granted, we are using the parking lot for baseball, we're using it for Beck Elementary, we're using it for the memorial, but all total, all in, the town spent $520,849.84. Now, that didn't come from the taxpayers. That came from hotel occupancy. We were able to use our hotel occupancy tax to pay for that, which was great. And I think, you know, it's a beautiful memorial, and I think it's something that, one day, when I look back on my council career, I will be glad that I made the motion to do that memorial. Now, what I want to say is that I never have served, and admittedly, I've never put on a uniform. My grandfather served, my dad served, my brother was a chaplain in the Army, and my nephew served. And so here's what I want to talk about. My nephew, like Alice said, served, he started off, he was in the 10th Mountain Division. He went to Kosovo first, then he went to Afghanistan, and then Iraq. He came home, and after about six years, he came home and he said, "Philip, I want you to have my helmet." He said, "And I don't want to ever talk about what happened." And to this day, nobody has, he's never talked to anybody in our family about what happened. We didn't know what to do. We didn't know how to help him. We didn't know what to say to him. We were very lucky because he got on with the Conroe Fire Department, and as chief probably will say, that's a band of brothers in itself. And so I think that he focused all of that that he had faced over in Iraq, mainly Iraq because he was in Fallujah during the heat of battle. He focused all of that into the fire department. And so, it didn't, it could have had worse consequences than what happened. So, what I want to say is, the reason that I'm going to vote against placing a dog in the memorial is because I think that that $30,000 should be used to help veterans. Mr. Monger has a great organization, and I think that, I think that we got a lot of emails that said that we need to allocate this money that donors have committed. I would submit that we, the town, we fulfilled that commitment for you. Those people donated to the Veterans Memorial. If you go back to 2016, when Connie got before us, she said that they had $18,000 to go towards this memorial. There was no talk of a statue. There was no, it was to complete the memorial. And so, I think that we, as a town, we fulfilled that obligation. And so I think that you have the ability, unlike us, because it is illegal, and our attorney will tell you, that we cannot take hotel occupancy and give it to wounded warriors. We can't take hotel occupancy and do anything for veterans. The Women's Club, in my opinion, has the unique ability to do that. You can take this $18,000, I know the $10,000 is earmarked, you know, this came after, this came after the approval, so you may have to give that back, or you may convince the donor that, you know, perhaps we can use this for a greater good. But I feel that the $18,000 has been fulfilled. I think that the, that us paying for that with hotel occupancy has fulfilled that obligation that you were under to those donors. And so, I learned more about military dogs over the last couple of days than I thought I would ever know. But there are, and I sent out to everybody that wrote me, there's Gizmo Gifts, which is dedicated to helping our military working dog heroes. There's Kevlar for Canines. There's Feed the Dogs Project. There's Canine Soldiers. There's Mission Canine Rescue. There's Spikes Canine Fund. The Sage Foundation. The United States War Dog Association. All of these groups are pleading, pleading for donations to help these soldiers who are coming back, these canines who, at one point, until 2013, were just considered equipment. And Obama signed into law that maybe we shouldn't call them equipment anymore, and we should be a little more respectful to them. And so, they actually have programs now in place for retirement and things of that nature. And so, all of these organizations, all of these organizations are seeking donations. And so, I think that we should, you know, I talked to Dennis Sheridan today, and I said, "Dennis, I struggle with, when is enough enough? When do we stop memorializing and we start helping?" You know, I would be, I would be remiss if we didn't have a beautiful memorial, but we have, we have a great, wonderful, like Mr. Monger says, it's, you drive by it at some points, and you're just, it makes you reflect. And I think it's, I think Jim Perrell did a great job when he added the POWs medallion there, and so I just think that we have a beautiful memorial, and I think at some point, we have to say, "Let's start helping veterans. Let's start giving this money that was donated to help the veterans." And so that's where, that's where I stand as a council member. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Philip. So at this point, you were speaking in reference to the amendment and maybe the main motion in some sense. So we have a motion to amend before us, and the next person to speak is Alicia Fleury.
Thank you. While I do appreciate the history of this project, which I wasn't here for any of it until this last year, that's what it is. It's history, it's the past. And instead of focusing on the infighting, and the disagreements, and the change of leadership, and the change of intent, and all of that before us, I would rather focus on the present and the future. And as far as raising money for awareness, how many in this room knew the extent of the service of military dogs before this came before council? A few, right? How many of you, like Councilmember Schaffner, and even myself, looked it up and learned a great deal that I had never even known before? You know, lots. So by having memorials such as this, it is education. It is spreading awareness so that people can band together and raise funds through awareness. Like Mr. Monger said earlier at the memorial with those young family there, those little kids didn't know what they were doing with those bricks, but those bricks opened up conversation about veterans and different holidays and what it represents. Again, spreading awareness so that, yes, maybe that young family will be motivated to start a fundraiser, to donate, to give money to organizations. So you do have to have, I mean, you may not think it's a purposeful expenditure of funds to put a monument or a statue, but it does serve a purpose. It serves for awareness. It educates, and it motivates people to raise funds. Cost, I hear, cost, cost, cost. From what I understand is, this monument is fully funded, not just for the monument itself, but also for the installation. So no town monies will be spent in the installation or the development of the statue. Anything related to the cost, whether it's irrigation being moved, is all going to be rolled into the installation costs paid for by the Women's Club. The upkeep and maintenance, from what I understand, it may need to be hosed down along with the other things once a week. We have volunteers for that. I just don't see any town expenditures that I'm aware of, that I've been researching, that would be a detriment to the statue. If you're in agreement to put it at Town Hall, and you're not against the monument, people don't come to Town Hall to pay respects and honor veterans. They go to the Veterans Memorial to honor veterans. The service dog represents veterans, the, if it goes to a battlefield cross, that's, you know, that memorializes and pays tribute to veterans as well. That's why people go to the memorial. They don't come to Town Hall for that. So that's why I made the amendment to have town staff place it, you know, at the memorial and not at Town Hall. And for the discussion about, when does it end? You know, it was supposed to end at this point, it was supposed to end at that point. Well, if we had that same logic with all our parks, we wouldn't have any improvements. We wouldn't have added shade at baseball. We wouldn't have had a bocce ball court added. So this is the park as well. I don't think there's any, you know, worry that someone's going to want to pay tribute to their relative via a cat and a pink tutu. And if they did, we could say no. But maybe somebody would want to donate a bench for people to sit and reflect. Maybe that would be a good idea. So do we really want to say, "No, it's one and done, we're finished," when there could be opportunities for things that would add to the memorial that are very reasonable and very appropriate? And council always has the opportunity to say no to things that aren't. My opinion is, this is very appropriate. After talking to all the entities involved, the veterans, the Women's Club, residents of our community, doing my own research, learning about memorials as a whole, learning about the military dogs, it is appropriate. I think it's appropriate to place it at the memorial. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Alicia. I signed up to be the next speaker. I move a substitute motion to substitute both the amendment and the main motion to approve the Trophy Club Women's Club conceptual design of a monument as presented tonight, not only in our packet but at the diocese, to be placed on the Veterans Memorial Park. The Trophy Club Women's Club will fully fund the monument, its base, and if needed, concrete pad, walking path, and lighting. Upon completion of this installation, the Trophy Club Women's Club will transfer ownership to the town of Trophy Club effective May the 8th. If I receive a second, I'd like to speak to it.
I'll second it.
So Alicia seconded. Alicia, I think in essence, your amendment was trying to accomplish the same thing, and I'm just trying to cover a couple of points that dealt with ownership and what exactly are we approving. There have been suggestions made tonight about changes to the statue or the proposal. I think what I'm trying to say is, with this substitute motion, is the money is the Women's Club money. It is not mine. It is not Bill Rose's. It is not somebody else's who might have a great suggestion, but the reality is, it's their money. And I appreciate the fact that there's a willingness to take input, but my fear about tonight was that we would sit here and debate the angle of the dog, what type of dog it was, what it was going to be, and it would just be a zoo. Now, I will tell you that I was disappointed in the emails that were sent that were so critical. I'm embarrassed by that. I'm glad that you came together, but tonight I saw people that still wanted to change. So I'm trying to be just real specific. We have a proposal before us. I want to approve the proposal before us. I would prefer the location was different than maybe what was proposed, but I don't want to confuse the issue. I want to let those issues work out with staff and whoever, and I want to support the Women's Club. And there's been some great suggestions about maybe little tweaks here and there, and that's great. And I saw ladies with the Women's Club taking notes, so I think they're trying to listen to that, and I appreciate what we have. I too am very proud, just as Philip is, and I think all of us who voted to expand the monument and prove it, use the hot tax dollars to do that, are very proud. It is a beautiful thing. It's a great place to go reflect and pay tribute to things. So that's the reason I made the motion and tried to just dot the i's, cross the t's on something. So at this point, Ryland wanted to speak. We have the substitute motion before us. If you want to speak to that, you probably can say whatever you wanted to say.
Sure, yeah. Well, Philip made a comment a minute ago, and it struck me a certain way, so I kind of wanted to, I kind of wanted to elaborate so folks understand where I sit on this. He was going back and talking about how we had an approved design in 2012, and then we had a substitute design in 2016 that was significantly more ambitious than the approved design that was on the books that had yet to have been completed, but the sum of money was $18,000. Anyway, there was a lot more to that discussion that night than just, than just council going, "Okay, we're going to, we're going to take care of this." Yes, ma'am? Okay. It wasn't just us saying, "We're going to jump in and drive the bus here." What it was, was it was evident to me at that time that there was a broken process in place, and that the framework required to take private money and put together something of a completely aesthetic and understandably emotional form, and channel it through all of the proper things that have to happen to make a project get designed, funded, and all of that, and then actually executed, was very broken at that time. And one of the ladies mentioned that this memorial had become an instrument of dispute. That night in 2016, it was very clear to me that it had become an instrument of dispute, and that was the first time that, hey!
Sorry.
It's me. That was the first time that any significant topic pertaining to that had come before me in council. I'd been on council two years at that time, right? So from 2014 to 2016, we approved a walkway being built that was in the plan or whatever, but that night on 2016, that was the first time that anything significant had come before, had come before us. And so, all of that was hitting us all at once, and it was very clear that there was, there was a breakdown. And I don't ever, I don't ever want to take someone else's vision and do something with it. If it's their vision, and it was already approved, then we should see that through. And that was why I supported what I supported in 2016. It was very clear to me that after four years and having raised $18,000, that the path we were on at that time was not a path to fruition. It was not a path to success. And I don't know what happened after that.
God.
Mute.
It is.
Holy moly.
Oh, I'm not the first person that that's happened to.
Okay, go ahead, Ron.
Anyway, let me regather my thought here. Okay. Basically, basically, the point I want to make is that we weren't, we weren't getting anywhere the way, in the direction we were going. And so, there was too many, there were too many voices in the room wanting this and wanting that. My feeling was, I wanted out of the dispute. I didn't want it to be an instrument of dispute either. I'd never even been involved in it. To me, it was a park, that it was there, there's a plan, the plan was in progress. So, the process at that point had failed, and my intention in supporting the town, using the funds to complete what had already been approved, was to bring it to a close so that it would no longer be an instrument of dispute. And I don't understand what happened moving forward from that, because at that point, to me, it was funded, the approved design was going to be completed, and I was happy with it. I don't know why the outstanding funds weren't applied to the previously approved design. That's not my business. That's between the Women's Club and your donors. You guys do whatever you need to do to square up there. But I just want, I want out of the dispute. I want out of the controversy. What we have is great. What we have is great. I don't want to be continually made the bad guy when all I'm trying to do is bring a project to a close that was broken for so long. And it really bothers me. You can see, you can see even now that we can't win. We can't win. Philip's trying to explain to y'all where he comes from, and before he even gets through, people aren't having it. So, you guys, there was some infighting somewhere out here, and I'm not really, I don't really understand who all it was, but apparently, they've all come together. But then you immediately can't listen to Philip. Not everyone, but you hear it. And it's just constant. It's constant, and it's never going to end. I wanted it to end. I wanted it to stop. I had an approved design on the books, so I did it. I approved it. We spent a lot of money. We have it. I think it's a great memorial. I'm proud of it, as everyone is, and that's good. But I just, I don't, I don't know where we go from here, because this will not be it. This won't be it. So, I just, I just, I just want everyone to know that I don't want to have any hard feelings with anybody. There's been a lot of great words said tonight. Everyone's heart's in the right place, but the execution from this has been poor on day one. This is just, it's just not, it's not a good situation.
All right, would recognize.
I'm sorry. No, we have a company, do you want to, no, I'd like to hear what you Do you want to... No, I'd like to hear what you have to say. I'm here to hear from people.
Well...
I'm not egging in...
Excuse me. Excuse me. You're out of order. If you wish to speak, go get a little grain farm in the back and turn it into the city secretary, and we can recognize you to speak.
I have one statement to make. We're going to talk about egging on. Okay, let me pull up the minutes from January. From January 27th, we had a meeting on January 27th, council meeting. A motion was approved seven to zero. Seven to zero. There's seven people here, seven to zero, that there would be no further work, complete pursuit on this memorial. Seven to zero. Prior to that, we had also stated that our hope in funding it was that it would be complete. So who egged it on to get us here? Someone had to egg something on to get us here today where you're trying to make us be the bad guy. And that's all I have to say.
All right. Chair would recognize Greg Lamott.
To Alicia's point, a park is a living piece of property. It will change, it will evolve over time, stuff will be added. It's a natural progression. As far as the retreat, yes, it was seven to zero, but it's my understanding that it was no further taxpayer funds to be put into the park.
All right. Counsel, come to order.
Mayor, I have Steve Flynn, who has signed up to speak.
Thank you.
I'm not a fan. I don't pontificate the way some others do, but the dispute of the past just needs to be put behind us. It's the right thing to do, and I just suggest that everybody, before they vote against this, you think long and hard about this, as it affects the future elections.
That's a threat. Okay. Please, everyone. Are you through, Greg?
Yes.
All right. Alicia, you have the floor.
Regarding the minutes from January, if you read all of them, and the motions, and the amendments, and the multiple votes, when we're trying to accomplish just getting the pavers engraved, finishing the pavers, the sandstones, and the back and forth, it was nuts for me. And at that point, I would have done anything just to get the bricks done and address the other issue later. So yes, I was remiss in voting for that last motion after oodles of other motions and amendments to, yes, if we can get the bricks done, fine, let's be done with the bricks and not worry about the sandstones. And I was remiss in not doing my research and doing, you know, my due diligence and learning more about the history of this statue, what it means, all the background behind it. And yes, I am sorry for that. But I also believe we always learn, we always evolve, and we're allowed to change our minds. And I changed my mind after speaking with the veterans, the Women's Club, the residents of the community, and doing my own research. Yes, I changed my mind. And if that door was closed in January, we're here opening it again. And again, I keep hearing about people in dispute, and I don't think it's a small thing that we have Carol and everyone from the Women's Club, and Jim and Carl from Metroport Veterans Association, who were in dispute, who didn't agree, and they have come together. And we are in agreement. And yeah, you're always going to have emotions here and there, but as far as the dispute and never ending, I think everyone here wants closure. They want it to end. And again, I wasn't here for all the past history, so I don't have that emotional tie to what was in the past, and I'm not hung up on that. But I am hung up on the fact that we have these groups here that are working together. We are trying to get closure. It is, we're not saying it's not a beautiful memorial, but I think what they're saying is they want to make it better, and they want to use their donors' funds as they were intended, because it's against the law for them to do anything else with those funds that they have. Thank you.
All right. So Holly did send me an email and verbally said that we had a speaker sign up. I'm going to recognize that speaker, and then I put a placeholder in the queue for me to speak. So Steve Flynn, if you want to come to the podium, again, state your name and address.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Steve Flynn, 417 Ramsey Trail. You know, there's been a lot been said going back and forth, and I'm going to end with the comment that Ryland made, when does it end? It ends tonight. I mean, we need to make a decision about this $30,000. This is donated funds, and I heard a lot, Phillip, from your side, about it started at $300,000, it got to $500,000. When is it going to end? You know, that's a lot of money. I get that. To Eric's comment about moving it to here, to the Town Hall, I don't understand that, and I'm concerned that you didn't explain why you wanted it here. And I think in fairness, if that's ever going to be a further discussion, then you ought to state why that is. Why do you feel that way? So, I mean, 10 people came up here, five more signed support, and I don't know how many emails you guys have received. They're all in support of this thing. Regardless of what's happened in the past, tonight, the town is standing in front of you guys saying, we support this, as do I. Thank you.
All right. So I asked to speak, and I move the previous question on all matters before us.
Did you want to, we had one more?
I know, but I was going to speak before I found out about that. So I move the previous question on all matters before us. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right.
Explain that.
So to explain that to everyone, there'll be no more discussion. We will vote on whether or not we want to vote. We're not voting on the motion. We're voting, are you ready to close debate? No more speakers from the audience, no more comments from council. If you vote for closing debate to support the previous question, then we will close debate and move directly to voting on the substitute motion. If you want to continue discussion, then you need to vote down, vote against the motion to move previous question. Is everybody clear on that? So I moved it, and Phillip seconded it. I don't know that I've stated that before, for the record. Any questions from council? Hearing none. All those in favor of the substitute motion, show your hands.
That's not the right...
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Wait, 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 wait. Wait, maybe explain it one more time.
I got it. All those in favor of the motion to close debate on the previous question, all matters before, show your hand. Okay. It was unanimous, I believe. Is that right?
Yes.
All right. So we are past discussion. We are ready to the substitute motion, which would replace the amendment and replace the main motion. Is everybody clear on that?
And if it fails, it goes back to the original amendment.
If it fails, then it goes back to the original...
Goes back to the amendment.
To the amendment.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. We clear? All those in favor of supporting the substitute motion, show your hands. All right. So I think it Alicia and myself and Greg, is that right? All right. All opposed, same sign?
Four.
Okay. So four against, three for. Alicia, Sanders, and Lamott voted four, and the remainder voted against. All right. So now the substitute, the amendment is before us, which was Alicia's amendment that said to amend the motion to place the memorial at Veterans Memorial.
I have a question.
All right. So Ryland, you have a question?
I have a question for our representatives from the Women's Club. So you guys have this money, you're working towards dealing with the donations. If, so Alicia's got a motion on the floor to place this statue. If that motion passes, and you guys do that, and you take care of your paperwork on the back end, what is your intention moving forward with this memorial? Like, how do you intend to continue your engagement with it?
There's a process involved with the designer, artist, sculpture.
Well, okay, I'm sorry. I jumped forward after it's installed. After it's installed and...
We walk away, and we're done.
Then we get to close our books on that account. And if there's anything left over, we would turn it over.
And so if someone then approaches the Women's Club in 2021, and Alice, you can see where my head is at here, and says, here's $20,000, I want a statue of...
I'm going to say, we don't have a Veterans Memorial Committee anymore. We don't have a chair because our bylaws will be amended. Rhonda wants nothing more than for me to dissolve her position. I want to dissolve the position. If someone comes forward with money, I'll refer them to the Metroport Veterans Association. We want to be done with this. There's a lot been going back and forth about, well, in 2016, blah, blah, blah. We're in 2018. We just want to be done. Donor intent is to put something at the Veterans Memorial. It's not to put something at the Town Hall. We get grants requests from lots of charities. We've never received anything from a Veterans Association asking for money, and we gave over $30,000 away this year. They want to apply, we would be glad to look at their application. The donor intent was not to give money to a Veterans organization while it's very worthy. It's needed, but that's not what we raised funds for years ago. I think it'd be illegal if we went back and said, we're going to ignore what you gave your money for, and we want to give it for something else.
All right. So did that answer your question, Ryland?
Yes, thank you, guys. I appreciate that.
All right. And is that the reason you wanted to recognize, or you want something else?
Yeah, but I wanted to follow on that with what Ms. Murphy said.
So I have a question by...
But go ahead, Tim.
From Councilmember...
I just want to ask, I just wanted to ask quickly. So at the time, you had $18,000. Could those funds have gone towards the memorial that was built, and you just decided not to give those funds?
No. We were trying...
So none of the things that we built were good enough for the donor?
No.
Then why weren't the, I'm asking, then why weren't the funds turned over for the project?
I'll answer that from the town's standpoint. We actually said, if you'll go back to the minutes, that we were going to build it with hot tax, and there was no reason to take those funds.
I understand that, but we were never told that this money had to be used for this the entire time.
Excuse me. I pointed that out, and I gave you dates when, yes, it was. It was discussed with...
In 2015, prior to that, yeah.
It was discussed with Adam Adams, who was then your Parks and Director.
That's, that's the missing link.
Yeah, but you weren't, it wasn't discussed with council in '16 when we decided to take it over.
Yeah, we were not aware of that.
That's what I'm talking about. That's when we were all here. That's when we discussed it. That's all I'm asking. I'm trying to understand it.
No, in 2016, you were told that we still had a balance of funds that had to be spent on the memorial. At that time, we didn't know how to spend the money, because with that amount of little $18,000, you can't get a whole lot. So we spent probably a year of research, what can we do? What can we build? What will be substantial?
And fulfill.
And fulfill what the donors wanted, when we were fortunate enough to have this man come along and say he would like to donate money. So that opened up a whole new option for us, is, oh, we can actually put in something significant of a statue of a military dog.
All right. So I'm going to go back to Ryland Roehu, head the floor.
Thank you, sir. So thank you all. You answered my question. I appreciate it. So Ms. Murphy mentioned that if she had someone approach her, that she would refer them to the MVA. So our folks from the MVA, Mr. Perro, Mr. Monger, anybody else, how do you guys intend to handle this moving forward? Because the reason why we are where we're at, and there is consternation, is because of the lack of structure and process. And my reservation has nothing to do with this or the aesthetics of the existing project or whatever, but simply that, I'm trying to look out for a public park, public resource, trying to have a structure around the way we deal with this. We don't tinker, despite what you've heard here tonight, we don't tinker with parks. We projects that are handled in capital improvements, bond elections, they're all very, very programmed out. So someone doesn't come and say, I really like, I really like baseball, I want a statue of Nolan Ryan in the Independence Park, and then we put it there. It doesn't work that way. So what I'm trying to understand here, I do not want to create a situation where the door is open and where every couple of years, I'm dealing with this at the emotional level that it naturally generates. That's the whole thing I've been trying to pull away from this whole time. So I'd be happy to hear your ideas, Carl.
Sure. So the Metroport Veteran Association is a loose organization. It's not a legal entity. It's sponsored by the nonprofit Gallant Few. We don't build monuments, right? We use donor funds that we can to create relationships and prevent veterans from isolating. And I didn't say before, I spent 10 years on active duty as an infantry officer, commanded an infantry company, I served in the 75th Ranger Regiment. I jumped into Kuwait at the end of Desert Storm. Nobody shot at me, so I got credit for combat tour, but it's not a real one in my book. But I'm able to create relationships, and that's what we do. So one of the things that, and I want to apologize to anybody that saw the email threads running around, because I misunderstood. I was out of town, I was visiting my grandson, and when I was asked to support this project, it was on a very short notice. And so I did a very cursory look of it. I looked at the sketch, and I said, I thought we could do better than that. I didn't understand all of the things that went behind it. I didn't know the history. Thanks to a community volunteer, I got on the phone with Carol, and when we talked about the history, and as I learned the reasoning behind it and why they wanted to do this, there was no option but to put my full support behind it. And yeah, it's an emotional thing when you have a gold star dad that says, when I look at that, that's my hand touching my dead son's hand. That's incredibly powerful. But I'll tell you, from my perspective, we're not looking to add, increase, build monuments. I think what Alicia said, I think it was Alicia about potentially adding a bench in the future, something like that's very appropriate. That's not something we're going to pursue.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Carl.
All right. Phillip.
Yeah, I just had a clarifying question for our attorney. I'm going to put him on the spot. If Alicia mentioned earlier that it's illegal for them to reallocate those funds, so I need to know if, I know you haven't seen their documents...
I don't represent them, so I don't know. Go ahead.
Well, so the question is, can they reallocate that if we fulfilled that obligation for them?
I don't know what representations they made. I don't know what conditions were given in the case of living people from the state.
Well, the $18,000 was made under the representation that there was going to be a four-phase project. When they started raising money, a lot of that money, not all of it, so none of that money was raised. I saw Connie out with things at the park, raising money for a four-phase project that had never been approved.
Can I come back in?
Yeah.
No, just a minute. Go ahead and finish your comments, Phillip.
No, I just need clarification on why this money can't be reallocated, because I'd much rather this money go to the Gallant Few. I'd much rather this money be utilized to help veterans. That's just me. I think that it's a lot of money, and it should be given to help veterans.
Okay. I'm going to make a statement, and then we'll see if we go to the audience. I'm involved in a number of 501(c)(3)'s, and if you accept money for a particular purpose, if you're not going to use it for that purpose, you are allowed to approach the donor and see if you can get permission to reuse it, or you can return it. And if you cannot get permission, and you didn't know who the donor was, then you're dealing with potential, if you do something else with it, then you've gone beyond your fiduciary responsibility. You might be sued, you may not be sued, depends if there's anybody around that knows any of that. You have some of that in the sense of money that was given a long time ago, and that you may not even have the records where that came from. So if you don't know where it came from, it's hard to contact the donor, and so you'll face some of those issues. Now, I'm not an attorney, but I'm involved in lots of charitable organizations, and you hear that over and over, and we deal with that aspect of what is your fiduciary responsibility when you accept funds for a purpose. And that I share with Ryland's comments earlier, when does it stop? My concern about tonight was, we do this, and then next year, somebody wants something else. Bill wants a different kind of representation. We're just going to be faced with maybe one proposal after another proposal. I'm not opposed to the Women's Club doing that. I just want to try to bring some closure to this and let them deal with their issue as best they can. So Alice, if you want to make a statement now, you can. Carl, if you want to, you can. And then I'm going to try to move us forward. Ryland, put in a speaker's request.
Okay. I think it was something you said about Connie outselling something, and that's where we got the $18,000.
No, no, no. I said that money was raised, I'm not saying the whole $18,000, but certainly money was raised from her going out. I saw, the first time I saw it was at July 4th. I'd never, as a council member, I had never seen-
Me too.
-these plans, never, ever. And there's the park that I represent, and there's four phases. And so I'd never seen that. So she represented that that was an approved plan and raised donations from that. So that's what I was trying to tell our attorney, that that's where some of those funds may have came from.
Okay. Some of those funds may have come from, I don't know, T-shirt sales or whatever. They were also going after larger donations. I know they went to the Rotary, Metropore Rotary Club and got a contribution. And that was, what they explained to me was their purpose in coming before the council. Because if they were going to do a larger project, they needed the backing of the town before they could go seek other funds. As I said in my opening remarks, I don't always support what the members want, but I have to do it because I'm the president. I thought what they proposed was pie in the sky. I don't think we need to be a destination Veterans Memorial. I don't see anybody picking out Trophy Club as a vacation spot to go look at our memorial. Let's go to Washington, DC if we want to do that. The money was given to us, some in big chunks, some by small contributors. As a 501(c)(3), we can't designate that the money goes somewhere else. We can't pay the town back for what you did. We can't give to a veterans' support group. We can't move it to the Town Hall. The money was donated with the intent that it go to the Veterans Memorial. So our hands are tied. When I first heard that everything was off the table, I was like, yay, we can use that money for scholarships. And they said, no, you can't do that. That's not why the money was donated. It has to go to the memorial.
All right. Thank you, Alice. All right. So Ryland, I had, as Holly pointed out, we had a speaker sign up, and I went past him trying to deal with things. Do you want to go ahead with your question, and then I'll recognize the speaker?
Well, I was going to ask Alice a question, but she just sat down. So why don't you reckon? It's Alice's choice. Okay. So you just said something. I was going to ask you the same thing before you said it, but you all led me there. And I heard it tinkering in the back of Philip and Tim's mind earlier in questions-
Y'all are mind readers.
You sit through enough five-hour meetings with people before it gets kind of freaky. Okay, so you, and you just said it. You said that you guys couldn't, you guys couldn't put the, at the time, $18,000 towards what we had spent to do the 2012 design, when we decided to complete that. So I didn't realize that that was the case. So I think that was Tim's question earlier.
Yeah.
So what that, what that tells me is kind of what I was trying to explain to everybody earlier. This is an impossible chicken and egg process. We're trying to do something that can't physically be done. We're trying to say, hey, everybody, we have a project, a community project, come donate money for it. Well, what is it? Well, it's this. Well, do you have approval for that? Well, no. Well, then why would I want to give you money if you have approval? And then you come, had, I'll say this, if I had been on council in 2012, one of the questions I would have said about the design then that we have today, more or less, is I would have been like, well, how funded are you? I wouldn't have wanted to approve it unless you said you were, you know, two-thirds of the way funded, three-quarters of the way funded, just because of what I just said, right? Chicken, egg, and all this mess. So how do we get out of this? What do we do? And so that's where I was going when I was asking you questions and Carl questions, is that, is that I don't have a problem with the idea or the concept. I have a problem with the process. If I can escape this feedback loop by approving this and being done with this, then that's a potential solution. But I think that was one of the questions that I think Tim and Philip both had. They were trying to figure out where we mismatched with that $18,000. Because if you guys had wanted to give it to us when we said, we'll finish the design that's approved, we would have taken it.
Yeah, we would have put it towards the monuments. We would have had you purchase the monuments and put it in there. I understand we're at a different point now, but that's what we would have done because that's what we spoke about then.
Okay.
It would have been simpler then. You wouldn't be going through this. We wouldn't be going through this. That's all. It's water under the bridge, but that's what we were.
Exactly. And $18,000 won't buy you anything.
But we were here to fill the gap.
Well, you, well, okay, that was in 2016. It's 2018.
Correct.
Let me answer your question. How do we close this? You all vote to accept our $30,000 monument. You're done with us. You won't see Veterans Memorial from the Women's Club ever again. That's a pretty simple answer right there. And I've got support out here who wants a Veterans Memorial, who wants a military dog with some tweaks. I like the headstone. I still want the Basset Hound, but we'll go with that. But let's be done with it.
I don't want to be that guy, but can we avoid a headstone right in front of an elementary school?
Well, okay.
It's right by an elementary school.
Okay, that's not, that's not my personal decision.
I know, I know. But again, this is why this process doesn't work.
But Ryland, it's not yours either. You represent the town. I represent the Women's Club.
Yeah, I get it.
I don't get to say what I want. I have to represent the 250 women who are members of the Women's Club. And y'all are supposed to represent the town of 12,000 people. Not what you want, but what the town wants.
I get that.
Okay. Excuse me. And the town wanted this closed two years ago.
I'm sorry, what?
The town wanted this completed two years ago.
Okay, I wanted it-
What am I voting on?
That's what we did.
I'm trying to solve this.
Y'all are out of order.
You guys, and I'm getting chewed out.
Council and audience, please come to order. We're going to conduct this in a civilized way. If you want to speak, the council has a way to ask to speak electronically. The citizens have a way to speak. And we're going to go through that order. We're not going to interrupt each other. We're not going to argue. And I realize that you maybe are excited and you want to clap about certain things, but we're not clapping. Nor are we making comments under our breath that people can hear around. It's inappropriate. If you have something to say, it should be said to everyone, and you fill out a form. Is that clear? If you continue to make cuddy comments without seeking permission to speak, I will have you escorted from the chambers. Is that clear? All right. So the next person who signed to speak is Linda Sanders. Linda, you have the floor.
Earlier when I signed up-
Your name and address, please.
Linda Sanders, Seven Hayes Court, Trophy Club, Texas. When I signed up to speak earlier, I was trying to clarify something that Philip had brought up about coming before council and asking for the, as Alice said, pie in the sky, which for most of us, it really was. I don't have minutes. I'd only have my memory.
I have minutes.
But I, yeah, I'm sure you do. But what I remember is your verbalization after that council, when Connie and Jeanette ask for the pie in the sky. I remember your comment being, you have not completed. Why would we give you more money? So after that, the discussion became, what can we do? What can the town do? Where can we get the money, the hot money, investigating, trying to do something good for this town? And I think that's the desire of everybody that showed up in this council chamber tonight hours ago, to express to you, the ones who have the vote, because we don't, what we desire. I'm reticent to say that I agree with Jim Perro. What's this world coming to?
Exactly.
But when he so succinctly said, I encourage you to vote for this because it's not going to cost you anything, to me, it makes perfect sense. And so I would encourage, implore, plead, beg you to respond to the people that have shown up tonight, that have sent emails, and that have tried to communicate their desires to you. Since I spoke, signed up to speak, one of our most decorated veterans in this room tonight turned to his wife and said, Trophy Club doesn't like veterans. We could probably move.
This is why I didn't want to have this conversation.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's why it breaks my heart to think that-
Ryland.
That we have come to the point where somebody on council will say to us, that sounds like a threat. We're not here to threaten. We're not here to do anything other than to try to explain to you what we would like. And we would like the memorial at the Veterans Memorial. And I beg you to vote.
All right. So I have three council people who have signed up to speak. First is Greg Lamont. Greg, you have the floor.
Alice, clarification. So the donor and the funds set aside strictly to have the statue placed in the Veterans Park, not Town Hall.
Right.
So my question would be, if the amendment fails, what is the point of voting for the main motion?
Well, parliamentary, you have to go back that way, so.
But you're voting for something that they can't do. Just one other thing as far as the term. When does it stop? It doesn't. Why should it? If somebody comes in with $100,000 and wants to put a statue of a nurse, we might turn it down, but they have every right to do that. So it doesn't stop here. In the future, whether it's this council or future council, they may decide to put another statue in. So it's an evolving park. What's there now doesn't end. It can continue.
All right. Alicia.
I think before emotions took over, Ryland was to be trying to have an open mind and trying to figure out a way to help make this work. I would hope that he tries that again, and let's move forward. And if the stickler here is, when does it end, like to what Greg said, maybe it doesn't end. Maybe it's council's job when something comes up, we either want to discuss it and vote and say yes or no. I don't think anything really ends in that context. And we can say tonight, we're going to dissolve the committee, we're not going to ask for anything else. You know, that's not to say in 10, 20 years from now, somebody else will come and want to do something. And that's just our council's job to either hear it or not hear it, vote yes or vote no. But I hope that when he comes back to speak after me, that he can get his point across and that we all be respectful. Let's not be our own worst enemy here. And let's honor what Mayor Sanders said. And please be respectful to everyone. That's the only way we're going to get through this. And that was one of my big things that I've been working all week on, is to bring people together and look at, you guys are together. You've got two groups that were opposed before, you're together. So let's keep that momentum going. And I hope Ryland can circle back and try to finish his point.
Ryland, you have the floor.
So we have Alicia's amended motion before us still, in case, for those of you keeping score at home. Are we voting on this? Are we voting on this drawing in front of us?
Conceptually, yes.
No. So you can't tell me what I'm voting on?
Do you want us to speak?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. It wasn't a rhetorical question.
It's a rendered sketch.
I apologize.
It's a rendered sketch.
Correct, correct. But is this, is this what's going to go there?
With some minor alterations? I mean, we, we got a couple of good ideas tonight. You don't like one of them.
But it's definitely that dog.
A dog.
A dog. A dog wearing possibly a flak jacket or wearing, I don't know, a collar. The picture with the dog wearing the prosthesis was certainly moving. Something like this. Here's, here's the predicament we're in. We have an artist who wants a contract signed by me, and she wants money. She's not going to start this project without money. She wants 10% now. So we can't move forward until I get approval from you all. So we can't even tweak this design until I've signed the paperwork and say, okay, let's get started. Now, there's going to be going back and forth, and we're going to go, no, we don't like the way the dog's ears cocked up or the way the metal's showing.
No, I totally get all that. I just, you know, a point I was trying to make before we had a little episode here is that-
Which episode?
One of many. Is that I have a picture with my daughter at the Veterans Memorial, my five-year-old daughter. There's 860-some-odd kids at Beck Elementary. She's the youngest one there. She turned five three weeks before kindergarten started. I got a picture of her with me at the Veterans Memorial on her first day of kindergarten. You know why? Because we parked there and we walked over. Okay? One offhand comment about maybe dialing back the death imagery a little bit at this park offended everybody. I'm trying to come, I'm trying to come to meet in the middle here, guys. I'm working real hard to meet in the middle. I'm being honest with you. I didn't, and Alicia explained how she changed her mind. Appreciate her explanation on that. I'm being straight up with you guys. That's all. I just want some concrete information. It's, at current, it's a memorial, and it can still be. I'm just, you know, I'm just asking to be sensitive of everyone's perspective, including the innocence of little tiny people. Okay? And that's important, too.
Well, I'm not in favor of the gun.
That's another one that doesn't really raise any issue with me, but with a lot of people it would. It's a great point. Thank you for bringing that up. That's an awesome point.
But that's my view.
Right. But, but here's the thing. Every single person will address us as representatives and say, you got to represent me. We're always going to make a decision that not everyone likes. So I'm simply saying, you know, this is cool. It's abstract. It, you know, a headstone is concrete. It's different. This is more artistic. So when I, when I heard that, it kind of just, it, you know, it gave me pause for a minute.
So do you prefer the boots and the helmet better?
I think it's cool. I think, you know.
You do?
Okay.
Yeah, but that's not supposed to matter. Oh, now my opinion matters.
Now we all love you again.
No, exactly. And that's the root of the whole problem. That's why this whole process doesn't work.
Well, I get where you're coming from, Ryland.
Yeah, you see what I'm saying?
You're like, I'm sick of this. I'm tired of hearing about it.
Right.
Do you know what? I am too.
Oh, I know you are. I know.
All right.
So anyway, I just want to point, so anyway, I just wanted to make it clear, I just wanted to point out that, that when we take a vote, my expectation is that the, is that the form, perhaps not the finish and the detail, but the form of this memorial will be this. Because that's in the rendering. It's no different than when someone comes to us for approval for a monument sign or for approval for things we did when we built this, this facility. The form doesn't change. Can't be a Basset Hound, I guess, even if that was what that means. But you know what, did you understand what I'm saying? Like, that is the expectation. I think we need to be clear what the expectations are. So anyway.
Okay.
All right.
We're good with that. My posse says we're good with that.
All right, Mr. Schaffner has the floor.
Yeah, I would much rather this money be earmarked, but I understand your dilemma. And our legal counsel has said there's a dilemma. Our mayor has said there's a dilemma. So, it makes, that whole conversation changes if you can't spend that money on anything other than the memorial. As, as much as I hate that, I think that if that's the case, then if we approve this, then we need to start talking specifics at that point. And so, I don't know how you want to handle that. Because we, we sort of went against your motion, talking to, talking specifics, but obviously, location, pathway, things of that nature are going to play into that. But, yeah, it's a whole different conversation for me if, if you can't do anything, if your hands are tied, obviously. And, and again, you want out of this, like you're saying, then that's a whole different conversation for me. And I, I hope people don't, it's, it's, it's a sad thing if people take out of this that we don't like veterans. Because in 2016, we could have just said, "We're not building anything. We're going to leave it as mulch and weeds." But we didn't. We, we took, we took this and we made something out of nothing, because there was nothing. And so, I hope, I hope people don't take us going back and forth through this night as we don't appreciate and we don't love our veterans. This, that is not what Trophy Club is about, obviously. That is not what Trophy Club is about. And, and like I said, we are very proud of the decision that we made to finish that memorial. And so, anyway, that changes the conversation, and obviously, we need to make some decisions on details at some point, Nick.
Okay. So, I'm just going to clarify where we are, and Eric wants the floor.
I would like to speak, yes, sir.
And so, I'm going to come right to you. I'm just going to make a clarifying statement. The original motion, as I tried to take notes, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, was the motion for the Women's Club to work with staff and place the monument at Town Hall. That was the original motion. Is that close enough for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The amendment was to place the memorial at our Veterans Memorial Park. So, what's still left, if the amendment passed, is the Women's Club work with staff, and then it would be to place the memorial at the Veterans Memorial. So, that's where we would end up voting if the amendment passed. All right, Eric, you have the floor.
Disappointed to be a council member tonight. My grandfather was a World War II veteran. He was a Baptist minister. It's funny, when I ran for election, my opponent was the wife of a veteran, and that was used by her, that was her campaign slogan. And it's like, that's not what, that's not what the United States is about. It's not about using veteran to go against somebody. And I feel that, that's where we're at. The Veterans Association has used my, my trailer and my truck for past two, three years. Y'all probably didn't, probably didn't even know that. The, in the July 4th parade, that's my truck and my trailer that y'all use. I don't do it because I want to be thanked for it. Just do it, right? And I just, you know, I made the motion to get the pavers done, to finish the pavers. I'm the one that made that motion. And then Jim Perrow and I had a discussion, and yes, we had a disagreement. Correct, Jim? We had a disagreement. But did it get worked out? Yes, sir, it did. I made the motion tonight to do the monument. Did I make the motion to vet memorial? No, ma'am, I didn't. I didn't. Because in my opinion, it was done. I think it's a beautiful statue. I really do. Honestly, I think more people would see it here. So, Mr. Flynn, you wanted me to clarify? That's my clarification. I think it would be a fantastic thing to have right by our two flags. I think it would be wonderful. Now, if y'all can't get the approval to do it, I would ask that you would come back before us. But that's where I would think it would be, get the most seen. I think it'd be a beautiful thing to add to the Town Hall. It's not a anti-veteran. Please understand that, okay? I'm here, I'm, I'm a supporter. That's all I got.
All right. Tim, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, most of you have no idea about us personally. And as soon as you don't get what you want, all of a sudden, we're anti-veteran. That's pretty disingenuous. We, we voted and spent the money and had to really go and look for the use hot tax to get it done. There would be nothing there. We try to do as much as we can for the veterans. We're just sick and tired, to be honest, of people from different organizations coming in here and infighting for years and coming back and forth to us numerous times. And the Women's Club knows exactly what I'm talking about. We had a, what was the? The community garden. That was like infighting between the people there, and if we voted yes for one, we're against the people on the other side. If we voted no, then we're against community gardens. We just want an end to it. Yet, that's exactly what happened. Exactly what happened. But the sad thing is, as soon as we don't vote the way you want, we're anti-veteran or we're anti-Women's Club. Sometimes we're anti the decision, okay? We try to take the decision one at a time, not against a whole group that, you know, fight for this country, fought for this country, died for this country. And because we don't want to put a statue of a dog somewhere, all of a sudden, you want to move out of the town. That's pretty comical, to be honest, okay? That's, we did everything else to this point, and then we don't do the last thing that you want because you didn't, because somebody gave you the money and said, "That's what you have to do. We're all supposed to change the way we think just to do that." I'm not against the statue. I'm against every time to do something that the goalpost keeps moving. Now, at the end, you said, "We're done." If you had said that in the beginning, this would have been a very short conversation. It took two and a half hours in to say, "Once we're done, we're done." So, if we're done and it's changing and you, and you're getting rid of it, then we can be done. But to say that we're anti-veteran, my dad, my uncle, my second uncle, third uncle, four boys, all from each, each armed forces, my father-in-law, World War II. So, don't offend us by saying things like that. I'm off my soapbox now.
All right, Ryland, you have the floor.
Hey, yeah, I just want to say that I appreciate Eric giving his thoughts behind placement at the Town Hall. I do think it's a good idea. I am actually in favor of both motions on the floor right now. Eric's because I think it's a good idea, and Alicia's because I, to be quite honest, I think that I, I've seen some of the leadership in the Women's Club work to try and get this to completion. And having, having dealt and worked with y'all on things in the past, I want to, I want to get this off your plate. I want, I want you to be able to close this out, and I want you to be able to move on and, and focus your attention elsewhere in the community. And I know that, I know that trying to go through the, go through the machinations of figuring out how to repurpose those funds is probably prohibitive for you guys, even if it just means a move, a move. But I do think Eric's good, Eric's idea is a good idea. So, if we fall back to that, I'll be, I'll be supporting both.
Alicia.
I believe we've already established that the funds were designated to be used at the memorial and not Town Hall. So, while Eric's idea may be good, I don't know if that's feasible or possible. And for Tim, I, I hope everyone understands that in the heat of emotion and passion, that things are said that aren't meant, outbursts are made that shouldn't be. And I'm hoping everyone can overlook that and have forgiveness. And I'm sure the people that did that, you know, it's an emotional response, and we're emotional beings, and that happens. And I know in my heart that this audience knows, that this council is all about the community. They have done a lot in the past to even have the memorial to be what it is today. So, thank you for realizing that. It's just an emotional topic, and people are going to say things they don't mean. But let's try to get beyond that and look to the greater good, as someone said before.
All right, Greg, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, the amendment, I think, is a little too broad. I'd like to make an amendment to go back to the substitute motion. It clarifies a lot. Can we do that? Or we got to vote everything down and then go back?
You can make a motion as a substitute motion if you wish to do so.
Okay.
But you can't move to go back to the substitute motion. Am I clear?
No. All right, so I'm going to make a substitute motion, not an amendment to the motion.
Well, you can do it either way. If you make an amendment, you're making an amendment to the amendment.
I would prefer to do a substitute.
All right, then, fine. Do a substitute and read what you want to say.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Trophy Club, Women's Club's conceptual design of a monument as presented at the dais to be placed in the Veterans Memorial Park. The TCWC will fully fund the monument, its base, and if needed, a concrete pad, walking path, and lighting. Upon completion of the installation, the TCWC will transfer ownership to the Town of Trophy Club effective May 8, 2018.
Second.
All right. Greg has moved to substitute motion, and we have a second from Alicia. The matter is before you. Any discussion, council?
I see your name.
Oh, well, that was for a different purpose, but, okay. I see Phillips. For those of you who don't know what's going on, we have these tablets, and you asked to speak, and that keeps the order. So, you wonder how we're ordered here. It's by whoever does something.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Philip.
Yeah, I'll, I'll support that motion. I think that, I think that the Women's Club needs closure. And so, I think that, I think that this is a good, a good motion to, to satisfy what they're needing to do. And, and then it gives us the ability to, to kind of complete this project. So, I support it.
All right. I asked to speak to ask a question of the attorney. It has been said tonight that if the Women's Club had funds left over after they accomplished what was proposed, that they would give those funds to the town. Can that be done legally?
It could donate it. I know we're also tax exempt. There are, yes, we'd have to cross the Ts and dot the Is. I don't know that it's, if they're specifically for this purpose, they may have boundaries tied to that. I haven't seen all their stuff.
Well, I think their boundaries are, all of that was given towards the Veterans Memorial. So, again, they got to try to honor that. So, they might very well say, "I want to give $1,000 to the town," but it's for
For the Veterans Memorial.
For the Veterans Memorial. Now, what does that mean? A replacement of a light bulb, mowing? I don't know what that means.
You could specify maintenance or repairs or
Okay. I'm just trying to clarify all our points, so I don't want to get you in a situation if we vote this yes, then we're not clear. Okay? So, that was my purpose. Greg, do you have a question?
Just
Or comment?
Along the same lines, can it be donated to the park or does it should be specific to the monument?
I believe you can do the Veterans Memorial Park, that Veterans area. Can't go build a bocce ball court with it.
Good. All right. Council, any other questions?
Yeah, just, just one other thing, Nick. What about location? Are we concerned with location? Or is that, do we want to leave that in staff's hands?
Currently...
Do we have that overhead?
Currently, the substitute doesn't deal with that.
So, can we see that overview, overhead? So, so where they want, go back one. This is where they proposed to put it. Is, is this down by the street? Yeah, because there's
It's closer to the street.
Right, there's the baseball field.
Yeah.
Okay, now go back to the overhead.
Back one slide or forward one slide, whichever way. Whoop, you were there.
I see. Yeah, what, go.
There you go.
It's holly running, and now go back.
Sorry.
Go back. No, I'm just kidding. So, so Alice, if, if this is approved, are you wanting to come off of the, off of that main, kind of by your monument? Or kind of by that, I guess y'all call that a monument? Is it? Okay, okay.
Carol, if you want to come to the podium, and
Please.
I'm not quite sure how you point at it, but you can take the mouse and put it on the computer. It will show up.
The only reason, and it wasn't our recommendation, we put that in the proposal to try to make it a complete proposal, but that was when we had met with Tony and asked for his advice as the Parks and Rec Director, where's the best place? And that's where he kind of suggested. He wanted to make sure we weren't disrupting what was already done. It's like, no, we don't want to disrupt whatever's done. It can go somewhere in that park, wherever's the best, you know, place for it, so it doesn't inhibit anything. It doesn't.
All right, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wonder if, if we just leave that to staff or make that a staff decision? Does staff want that decision? No.
The motion is not specific to location at all.
But that's, that's, that's the dilemma. Should we amend that motion to be more specific?
Amend the motion. I'd make an amendment to allow Texas Women's Club to pick the location.
Yeah, let them collaborate. Texas Women's Club, what?
Oh, Trump.
Y'all, your membership
Yeah, you have to ask everyone in Texas now for their opinion.
TCWC. Okay.
Am I allowed to say some?
Yes.
I just want to make a point before the vote goes, is that it's not just us. We agreed to work in conjunction with this design with the Metropolitan Veterans Association, so I don't want them excluded.
Oh, well, that changes it. No, I'm just kidding.
Okay. Did I get a second on Eric's?
No, sir.
I'll second.
There you go. Okay, that's what I thought.
Well, do you want to add the
Just collaborate the three
Mayor, we didn't have one other person wish to speak again.
All right, so just a second. So, when did that request come in?
Before the amendment.
Before the motion. Then they're going to have to wait. If they want to speak to the amendment, this was before the amendment, right?
Yes.
If they want to speak to the amendment, I'll recognize them now. Otherwise, you're going to have to wait. Who won, who was it?
Shirley Forgan.
Okay, Shirley. So, you, do you want to speak to the amendment that was just made, or you want to wait and speak to the main thing?
I want just a general statement. Make a general statement, not specifically the amendment.
Okay, then, yeah, I'm going to have you wait till we get back to it, okay? I can't answer that. But parliamentary, if you'd have said you want to speak to the amendment, I'd let you speak, but
Okay, I'll speak to the amendment.
All right. Come recognize yourself and your address, and you can speak. You're speaking to the amendment, so try to somehow include that in what you're going to say.
Okay. I'm Shirley Forgan, and I live at 301 Watermere Drive, Apartment 103, South Lake. Now, I know a couple of you. I know a few people out here. I used to live here. It's only the second council meeting I've ever attended, and I am so disappointed in the behavior of the council and a couple of emotional remarks out in the audience.
All right, excuse me just a minute.
Okay. I will, I will address the amendment. The only one
Just a minute. You were out of order.
Oh, I am?
You were out of order, talking about something that you said you were not, you were going to talk to the amendment.
Okay.
That didn't talk to the main motion or the amendment.
Okay, you can delete it.
To say who was good or bad. All right, so if you want to talk to those
The amendment that Greg brought up is the only sensible thing I have heard from this council tonight. It, to me, it makes the most sense, and it gets done, and it's over. I know what the Women's Club wants. I haven't come to a conclusion yet of what the council wants and what they agreed to.
We haven't agreed to anything yet.
Well, I'd like to see an agreement come to and make some sense and quit wasting people's time and energy. Thank you.
You may be seated.
I would encourage you to start coming every second and fourth Tuesday, ma'am. I think you will be Oh, you don't live here. That's right. So, never mind.
I lived in South Lake.
All right. So, we have a motion to amend before us, council. So we have a motion to amend before us, council. Eric moved to have the TCWC make the decision about the location, and it received a second. So that is the matter before us. How TCWC comes to that decision is up to them. Is that clear? Okay. All right. Y'all ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to amend, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. All right, we're back to the substitute motion as amended. Substitute motion is to... To approve the Trophy Club Women's Club conceptual design of a monument as presented at the, tonight at the dais to be placed in the Veterans Memorial Park. The Trophy Club Women's Club will fully fund the monument, its base, and if needed, concrete pad, walking path, and lighting. Upon completion of the installation, the TCWC will transfer ownership to the town and then add to it. TCWC will make the decision about the location. So that's the way it would be as we're voting upon.
Well, work with staff. Was it work with staff?
Work with staff was in the previous motions, not in this motion. You never said it in yours.
Okay. No, as far as location?
Well...
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. We're good.
Everybody ready to vote? We're voting on the substitute motion as amended. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It passes. The only opposed is Jensen, as the rest were for. The matter is closed. Thank you for coming.
No, sir.
Oh.
It's not closed. That was a substitute motion.
Right.
To, no, it's the main motion. So now we have to vote on the main motion.
Which is the same thing as the substitute.
Correct. But that was a vote to decide whether we substitute or not.
All right. All those in favor of the substitute motion, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It does pass unanimously. All right. So we are getting ready to talk about future agenda items, and then we're going to be going into executive session. And so if those of you want to depart before you hear the rest of this, you can. Please do so quietly. Councilmember Kurtz had to take a break for a moment.
I need to as well, Mayor.
Council, do you want to move forward or what?
We can hang a recess.
All right. Council is going to stand in a five-minute recess.
Bye-bye.
9:32. Just to let you know, Councilmember Florrie is ill, and she's going to go ahead and leave. All right, I think we're recording. Council, if you will come to order, we have returned from recess at 9:40. We are on item 11, discussion of items for future agenda to include agenda items for consideration on the May 16th and May 22nd, council agendas and the future agenda list. Philip, we remove those minutes, right? Do you want to place them on the 22nd?
No, no. We just need to place that, that particular, I think what we've approved is approved.
Okay.
But we need to add those, those two other areas.
Okay, so that's consideration of maintenance and ownership of land along Indian Creek.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
I'll let you with that.
And it probably should just be on the next agenda, not even future agenda. Just place it on the next agenda and we'll deal with it.
I would second that. Okay. So it's, whatever we said on that agenda, it's consideration in action on ownership and maintenance of land along Indian Creek between those streets.
There's two other areas that, that we didn't address. We were too specific in our motion.
Okay. All right. So without objection, we'll have some items coming back. Holly, if you'll work with Philip exactly what we need to place on there. Is there any objection from council for trying to clean that up? Is there any?
No, sir.
All right.
Go ahead.
Any direction from council on what staff should do in the interim with the maintenance of that property?
You know, when we discussed this, we said to, to basically go back to the way we were doing it until we resolved the issue. So, and I know that you contacted the homeowners, but I, I think that you can glean from the last council meeting that we just want to go back to what we were doing prior. It may confuse homeowners, but I think as you contact them to turn over land, that you can kind of explain.
So without objection, town manager will go back to the fact that we were maintaining the land until we can get resolution. Is that clear? Anybody object to that?
Not yet.
All right, no objection to that. Tom, that should give you direction. So realize we kind of crossed the line about agenda, but we needed to clarify. All right. So anybody have anything to future agenda to add?
Nope.
All right.
I'll point out, the May 16th, we are scheduling it for 9:15 a.m. CCPD will meet at 9 a.m. and council at 9:15.
That's the canvas the elections on. What was the date?
May 16th, next Wednesday.
No, we were going to do it the next...
Wait till the 22nd, yes.
We're primetime, Tim.
Yeah, y'all.
Lamont and I do it behind closed doors.
Oh, 16?
Secret.
On the 16th, Wednesday, the 16th.
I will not be available 16.
I think I can be there. We'll get a...
We'll have a quorum.
No, we had Holly.
I think I'll be able to be there.
And actually, we don't even have to have a quorum.